And with that, I will call to order the August 8, 2024 City of Longview City Council Meeting. Good evening. Tonight, Councilwoman Shannon Moore is out of town, but as you see, she is joining us by screen. State law allows members to participate in the meeting virtually, and we are glad she is able to be here. She is actually, I don't think she'd mind me telling you, she is at Texas Municipal League training to get her orientation on being a council member, so she's out doing city work and made time to make it here tonight virtually. So, very glad to have you, Ms. Moore. And our prayer and pledge today will be led by representatives of Longview Two Ambucks, whose mission statement is inspiring mobility and independence. The group has served Longview for 33 years, giving back more than 400,000 into our local community, providing the Amtrike Adaptive Tricycle, building ramps, giving scholarships, hosting the Trek for Trikes Walk Run through Carmella's Magical Santa Land in November and December. Guess they have a special in there. And I would like to welcome up Carmella Davis, Linda Voiles, and Amanda Woods. Thank you guys so much for being here. Please stand for our pledge and prayer.
We will start with a prayer first. Is this on? Okay. As we said, we inspire mobility and independence, so I'm going to read you a little special needs poem. They say that I have special needs, and while that's partly true, the needs that might matter most to me are the same ones that you have too. I need to be accepted. I need friends that make me smile. I need a chance to learn and grow, feeling valued all the while. Sure, I need some extra help, and some things I can't do, but I hope you'll see beyond all that, inside, I'm just like you. If you'll bow your heads. Oh, Father, source of all inspiration and wisdom, guide our minds and hearts as we seek to create and innovate. Fill us with your divine creativity that we may bring forth new ideas and solutions to bless this world. Amen.
Amen.
So, right, I am an Ambuck, so I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you guys so much. Next on the agenda is citizen comment. I do not find that I have any citizen comment cards. Is there any citizen here who would like to make a comment and fill out the card after? Seeing no one, I will move on. As I mentioned earlier to council, Ms. Moore is joining us virtually tonight to make sure that you help me conduct business a little bit. I'll ask that we conduct votes by raise of hand, and again, of course, indicate your desire to speak by raising your hand. I will look to Ms. Moore to raise her hand, so I can recognize her by video, but just, yeah, help me with that, as I know you guys always do, so thank you. First up on our agenda then is a presentation of an update on recycling services for the City of Longview Sanitation Division from Mr. Archer. Go ahead, Mr. Archer.
Mayor, council, Mr. Maffey, appreciate this time to go over recycling. Of course, we've had a lot of changes lately. On June 12, we had a fire at our MRF. Now, a MRF is a materials recovery facility, so everything that's picked up co-mingled is taken to a MRF, and then it's sorted and it's sent out to the different, you know, people that'll buy those materials from the MRF. There is currently no MRF in this area operational. There is not a MRF in Shreveport. Actually, the people in Shreveport told me they had planned on trying to use rivers, but have delayed that because of the fire. The closest MRF to Longview is in Dallas. The issue with the transporting to Dallas would be you'd have to basically have something like this, which is a transfer station where we'd transfer the trash from the trucks onto an over-the-road, open-topped with a tarp on top, walking-floor-type truck that would be able to take that to a MRF in Dallas for it to be dropped off. So, it's not a really good option for us. So, right now, as it stands, we're just continuing to kind of hold off on recycling until we can, until they can rebuild. Rivers is committed, that picture shows it, I think that was from yesterday. They have cleared all of the debris off and are planning to get started on rebuilding that as quickly as they can. We would expect it to be rebuilt in nine to 12 months, so then we'll be back in business. We intend to continue our recycling program, I want to make sure citizens know that, we're all committed to recycling. It is not our intent at this point to do any reduction in staff or removal of equipment. Our plan is just to continue picking up like we are now, and, but we will see some reductions in cost. We'll see a reduction in cost in our overtime, we'll see a reduction in cost in fuel, we'll also see it in that disposal cost, because you can go to the landfill and drop off a ton of trash there for like $29.40, but taking it to the MRF was $75. So, there's a difference, so it'll be a savings for us. So, what we intend to do is issue a one-time refund at the end of each fiscal year. This would allow us to get those savings back to our customers, but also give us time to make sure that we're looking at it and that we don't end up issuing a refund and refunding that back and then saying, oh, wait, we maybe didn't have the savings we thought, so we need to back that up. This is a much better way to handle it at the end of the fiscal year when we know what our real expenses ended up being. So, we estimate for '23, '24, there'll be 3.5 months where we don't really offer recycling, which will be approximately $1.40 that we'd be able to run, refund back to the customers. And then if they get this built in the nine-month period, we expect to be able to give for the next year $5.50 as a refund. And so, I think with that, I'll answer any questions you may about recycling.
I guess I don't have a question, but just want to confirm, Mr. Archer, that we would be telling residents to continue using recycling, perhaps as they have been, just to stay in the habit?
Yes.
But understand, of course, that the recycling bins are going to the dump at this time because we don't have a feasible option for recycling.
Exactly.
But we don't want to change any habits.
We don't want to change habits. We want people to continue to recycle like they have been, yes.
Okay. Any questions or comments, Mr. Archer? Thank you. I know that's, we're sad to not have that, but I appreciate the commitment to keeping the recycling program and making sure we're ready to go as soon as we have an option for that facility.
Yeah, I've been really proud of our program. I think when Rivers decided to locate a place to build, they came to Longview because of the programs we have here, so, anyway, great job from everybody, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Archer. Next, we have the consent agenda, based on some discussions we had at our work session on Tuesday. I am going to go ahead and pull off Item B for further discussion. Are there any other agenda items that any council member would like to pull off the consent agenda for discussion or questions of staff? Nope, haha, thank you, Ms. Moore. I can see that you're talking, but I can't hear you yet.
Can you hear me now?
Nope, can't hear you.
Can you hear me now? Can y'all hear me now?
I wonder who's going to help us with that.
They'll call their cell phone.
Okay.
They're working.
Okay, we're working on it.
Okay.
There we go, I can, we can hear you.
You can hear me?
Sorry, go ahead, Ms. Moore, we can see and hear you.
Okay, also, I wanted to pull off Items A, E, and H for discussion.
A, E, and H. Let's go ahead and start with consent agenda, Item A. Mr. Johnson, if you would come up, and I'll, Ms. Moore, go ahead and ask any questions you got.
Good evening, council.
Good evening. Hey, Mr. Johnson, so I just wanted to further clarification on the, this is the final draft, correct?
Correct. This is the final draft that we have to submit to HUD for their 40-day period to review.
Okay, and on that draft, is it, does it tell details on what we plan to do with the grant?
Yeah, there's a 200-page document with those details, yes.
Okay, well, can you give us some of the details on what we plan to do with the grant?
Oh, sure. Well, what we're planning to do with the grant is kind of follow what the, what the survey noted in terms of the survey monkey, and what came out was our priorities. This process is about a five-year conversation, moving forward what this city should address in terms of working through those dynamics regarding the community development, block grant options, and kind of what fell out in terms of the top was affordable housing, job training, homelessness, and street repair. And also, on that street repair, is beautification. Our community likes a curb appeal, so, so it's really important, at least top two, that beautification made that in terms of priority for some of those fundings.
Okay, so in beautification, is it going to be basically the community or we're talking about city properties?
It is open. I mean, I think in terms of, it could be a nursery or a company that's willing to work with the city in terms of curb appeal and how that looks, developing a committee to address the issue, and then we'll look at implementation kind of initiatives, but I think that's really great that our city wants our community to look good.
Yes, I just want to make sure that the community is aware of what the grant is actually for, and once it gets approved, that we come back with further details on how they apply and what the criteria is for.
Sure, absolutely.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
That sounds good. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Johnson? Good, okay, I'm going to go ahead and go to E, and that is Ms. Laura Hill.
Yes, I just wanted a little bit of details on what type of grant this is and what actually is in, what actually are the details of the grant.
This particular grant is an opportunity from the One Star Foundation to apply for a planning grant to, that would take place in FY 2425, and then we would plan to apply in '25, '26 for opportunities to bring AmeriCorps members to work with partners in prevention on all of the initiatives they have, which basically fall within the human services area, so mentoring, bridges out of poverty, unity and diversity, the disability committee. These AmeriCorps members would come, help us do more community outreach, more community activities to see and involve the community in the overall effort to make Longview a better place to live.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I know Ms. Moore knows this already, but just for the public's sake, this means we're giving you authorization to apply for it, not that we are receiving it, correct?
This is correct. Our grant process is we have to receive permission from the city council to make application for any grant coming through the city's coffers, and we're asking for permission to apply and accept if we are chosen, and then we do the work, et cetera. So, we may not know for quite a while when we get a grant. I think you're going to talk about one in a moment with Dwayne. We actually made application in 2021, so.
Okay, great, good question. Go get us some money.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, and moving on to H, that is Mr. Archer.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I just wanted to clarify, so it's $62,500, and it says that it's coming out of the reserve funds, and I just wanted to get clarification that it's a match and all the details on that.
Yeah, we applied for a hazard mitigation grant to get generators at Station 1-3 and at the fire training center. We were awarded that, $287,000, but our matching part of that is the 62.5 that's listed there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Archer on that one? Go ahead, Ms. Pertle.
Yes, sir.
So, this is coming out of a reserve funds?
The 62,500 is, yes, sir.
Did we know this when we applied for this grant?
Yes, sir, yeah.
What happens if we didn't have it in reserve funds?
We don't have to accept the grant if, if y'all chose not to do that.
It'd be stupid not to accept the grant, but we're being forced to use reserve funds for something that, you know, we may have other plans for. You understand? Go ahead, Rollin.
Okay.
One of the things, and it's a strategy we adopted, I will tell you that Laura Hill has asked me every year to put money in the budget so they have seed money. The problem with that is, as tight as budgets have been and as difficult as those are to prepare, I have not put that money in to try and meet our known expenses, and so that is why we have placed on the actual application grants, if there is a match required, where that would come from, because we're trying to be transparent in that. And so, I would tell you that, you know, recently, we've used some reserve funds. We hadn't used reserve funds in the past very much, but we thought, which is why we said, let's do the grant applications, let's put that in the permission, when we get the permission from council to do that. And so, but ultimately, today, if council decided, which I understand you're right, multiplying your money by four, that's one of those creative ways we found to diversify our revenues and meet needs that we have, but you, council could still reject this at this point.
So, by rejecting it, though, we would lose the grant?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
It'd be stupid to do that then. Okay. I mean, that was kind of money that we weren't counting on taking out of that reserve funds because that seems to be the holy grail right now, and everybody wants to dip into it without us being able to control it, and I really, I don't like that taste. Okay, well, have we got any more of these coming up like this, Dwayne?
Do we have any more? Yeah, a lot of the grants that we apply for, I mean, that's the intent, would be to fund those.
Every, and this is, I guess, my challenge to you, every time a grant comes forth to you, a grant application, like the one I just did for AmeriCorps, you'll notice if you looked at that AIS, it says a 24% match, but it says in parentheses, "in kind." That's a signal to you that they're not going to ask for cash from us. We do try everything we can to find alternative forms of cash funding, for example, I think you're doing Marbury later? Marbury, you know, we did some grant applications for Marbury, but we used the 2018 bond funds as the cash match. So, we try to find alternative sources, but some grants, in this case with FEMA for the generators, it's a 90-10 grant. Unfortunately, it was written in 2021. At that time, that council did approve the idea of using fund balance. Now, we're having to come back to you to get the money, actually.
But at that time, the money was in the, in the general reserves, right?
In the, in the reserve fund balance, yes, sir.
Or was it in the reserve funds?
It was in the reserve fund.
Or was it in the general funds?
No, reserve fund.
Okay. So, to answer my question, do we have any of them that are coming up, and how much?
I would have to get you a report on where we stand if we get the grants.
Because if we spin this reserve down, what happens then, Rollin?
Yes, there, there, there are issues with that, and, and I think I've made that clear in the conversations that we've had with the budgeting process. We can, we can put budgets together that has $300,000 in, as a line item for the match, and we can program those in, budget it, but the flip side is, we're, when we're balancing needs, we're going to have to put something else off the shelf. So, we can, that's certainly council's decision if they want to see us do this differently. I think with the amount of grants that we apply for, that was one of the strategies in the reorganization, was that was the strategy, we don't want to, we only want to budget for things that we get. And so, if I had known this was a sure thing in the budget, whenever we knew we were going to get it, we would have had $65,000, so.
It certainly is on my list, Mr. Pertle, to include a work session in the future on fund reserves, and maybe talk about, we've had some, some conversations in other meetings about maybe setting some policies in regard to that, or looking at systems we could put in place as a council, so I think that's a very good conversation to have, and we'll look to do that in the future. Go ahead, Mr. Conley.
Well, my only question, my only statement to that is, we as a council may have certain things we want, want to do, or have done, and we've got X amount of dollars that Mr. Rollins has told us what we've got in there, but now it's getting nibbled away by outside interests that we, I didn't know about this. I mean, I'll be honest, I probably, well, I'm sure I voted for it, but I didn't realize that was what was coming up, and this is one of them things that kind of catch you on the backside, and, you know, 62,000 here and 35,000, 85,000 here and there, I mean, we've nibbled away $10 million real quick, and then another 10 million, we're getting close to our half-to-half to reserves. So, that's, that's why I wish this stuff would have been somewhere in the line, in the line item on the budget somewhere, or at least let us know, because every time we reply for a grant, if we're going to have to come up with, say we get $100,000 grant, we're going to have to come up with $10,000, I mean, we, you know, that's a, that's just an open checkbook, and that's really, I don't, I don't like that, without us knowing about it, you know? Okay, that's all, thank you.
Okay, sorry, go ahead, Mr. Conley.
I do agree with Mr. Pertle, and as far as we've seen, Mr. Maffey talked about it, we've got to be creative. I applaud the fact that we're, we were getting a return on our investment about four times. But just my question is, this is a, you mentioned that, I guess, just a general, you said that in 2021, we had, we got something coming up that was a grant from 2021, right? It's, you're going to mention it in a little bit, right?
This is the one we applied for in 2021.
2021, I guess.
We weren't notified, we received it until late '23, we were in this current fiscal year, and now we're getting the work programmed.
Right, and then you mentioned the 2018, we, at times, we've used the bonds, been creative with bond money from 2018 bond?
Based on the approved project, the voters approved, so, for example, Marbury was, Marbury Street was approved in 2018 by the voters. We found a grant that supported the cost underruns, overruns, whatever, and we use, we were able to use the bond funds as the grant match, so there was no need to come back to the reserve fund.
Well, I appreciate that, and I guess that's my, you know, that's what I'm asking, is maybe, like, let's be creative and try to do that, even the thing, like, even what you mentioned with the 300,000 line item or whatever, to try to, because we want to get these opportunities, and we don't want to dip into our savings, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Everybody good? Okay, let's, if, did you have something, Mr. Wade?
I have another question on a line item, but that's it. When you get a minute.
On the consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am. When you get a minute.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Which one would you like to talk about?
Of course, with me, it's line item F. Mr. Albertson, why are we taking all of our athletes out to Pine Tree, sir?
So, for that line item, that's formalizing an agreement, a gentleman's agreement essentially that we've had with Pine Tree for several years. We will utilize Broughton continuously, as well as Pine Tree's facilities, as well as some of LISDs. It's simply just how many gymnasiums we need for the amount of teams that we have. Also, it's a fortunate problem for us, because we have so many participants in our youth league and adult league that we need that extra space to be able to make that.
I meant that in gist as well. I know they play basketball in Pine Tree, too. That's all, it's totally fine. I just want any opportunity I can to kind of, you know, jab it at Pine Tree some, all right? Thank you, sir. All right? We know the best basketball is being played at Broughton Recreation Center.
I think Mr. Conley wants a shot back at that one. Go ahead.
John, why are you there? I would just like to say, and I don't know, recently, maybe everybody doesn't realize this, but the Longview, we had some kids from Pine Tree and Longview combined, the one, the nine-and-under, I believe, in that World Series, and the 10-and-under.
Yes, baseball.
Baseball, placed second in the World Series, so, congratulations, those kids. And I just wanted you to be here and get the glory for that, John, okay? Congratulations, buddy.
Good, good, good. Anything else, anyone would like to talk about the consent agenda? If not, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve it, and we'll pull off Item B and vote on that separately.
I move to approve.
A motion from Mr. Wade?
I think we did. Or you want to talk about?
Yes, I'm going to pull B off entirely, and we'll vote about that separately.
Okay.
So, I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with B pulled off. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second? All in favor, please indicate with raise of hand. Aye. Any opposed? Consent agenda less Item B is approved. Item B, Ms. Cohen, if you don't mind to get up, we'll probably ask you some questions. Consider a resolution proposing a tax rate for 2024 and scheduling a public hearing on the proposed tax rate. I just felt since we talked about this the other evening at the budget session, it was appropriate to pull that off. Council might have some further questions, comments, or discussion, so I will open up the floor to that at this time.
Oh, us?
Oh, she's going to discuss it first? No, I think she's just there for questions.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah. Go ahead, Ms. Pertle. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Moore was first.
Okay, Ms. Moore.
Is that okay? Go ahead, Ms. Moore.
Oh, no, that, I was just asking a question, I was seeing if she was going to discuss or talk about what she's proposing, so for the community to understand.
What we normally do is a preliminary vote to set up the public hearing for the tax rate. We, in this notice, we have to state which council member voted for the tax rate and who did not, and it's, it's like a two-page notice. So, this vote has to happen before we can actually place that notice in the paper, and it has to be, I believe it's like seven days, seven to 14 days before we actually approve the tax rate.
And I actually, go ahead and add, so the tax rate that is included in the resolution currently is the same tax rate that we have this year, which is 56 and 19 cents per 100 valuation, is that right?
That's correct.
I think you both put that up, thank you. And then what we talked about the other night is we were exploring funding options for pay raises, other things that council was considering, whether to include, how to include, how to fund, all those things. We had some information given to us that would include changing that tax rate to hit certain numbers, so that's just what I wanted to pull out for conversation tonight. Keeping the tax rate the same would be approving Item B as it is, and moving forward, setting that public hearing, but I believe, you know, if we want to have any discussion about it, great, if not, great. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Moore.
So, just to clarify, so consent, the B, is keeping the current tax rate to what it is right now, correct?
Yes, the current, I'm sorry, Ms. Cohen's answering that, too. Yes, the resolution as it is, even though it doesn't say that on the agenda, is set at the current tax rate, so to approve Item B as it stands would be to set the tax rate for the public hearing at that same rate that we currently have, that's correct.
Okay, without any?
Without increasing it, correct. Correct. And then, Mr. Pertle, I believe, had a hand.
I was for the tax increase. I'm still for a increase in the pay for the employees, and I'm assuming that we're probably divided both ways up here, and the only option I came up with, Laura's already dipped into it, was to go into a one-time fee into our reserve funds to fund it this year. I would rather have the tax increase, but by doing that, if it passes, if it passes the tax rate, it's a compromise. I would rather have the tax increase, but by doing that, if it passes, it would be great. If it fails, our employees wouldn't get anything. And I know there's still a lot of work to do on this. Uh, I won't be here next year to do that. So by, uh, using the fund balance, the reserve fund balance, uh, to the tune of whatever it's going to take to do this one time, now one time only, then that way, we could get past this now and future councils could decide what they wanted to do. I'm not trying to skirt the, the issue. I'd still, I still think that by doing the, the tax increase would solve the problem, but some of my counterparts up here probably don't feel that quite that way. And, um, the, the people that are getting hurt are the employees, especially the $15 hour guys and stuff like that. And inflation hits everybody, not just us. It hits, it hits everybody. Whether it's teachers, or whether it's road workers, or whether it's policemen or firemen, it hits everybody. So if we don't stay up with this and we skip a year, we're going to be behind where we were three or four years ago. Right, Wade? Ray? You remember, we had to, we had to start working ourselves up, 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 just to get back to Tyler, for instance. And, uh, I don't think that's fair to previous, to future councils, because we're going to put them in the same boat that me and him and you, Kristen, were in a few years ago, when we started bringing this up and getting these raises to where we needed to be. I hate to use this money for this. It's, it's a one-time deal. Roland will explain this. I've asked him for a few numbers on certain things, but since this has come up, maybe those aren't even relevant at this point. You know? But sooner or later, something's going to have to be done, because you can't, if we can't balance a budget, we're going to have to make sure we, we get money in there to do something for these people. And we can't afford to lose our public safety people. Like Chief Stillman said the other day, it takes three years to get an EMS fire, fireman online. And, you know, we worked three years to get them there, and there's no incentive for them to stay if they can get that certification and go somewhere else and start their retirement, start their, start their, uh, you know, their, uh, their work, you know, on that. So I, I, I'm going to say that I'm going to bite the bullet and say, well, let's spend part of Laura's money here, a million and a half of it to, you know, to get us where we need to be for one year only. And, uh, I'm sure Roland's got some stuff to say about that. And I would ask him, if he needs to chime in, to chime in and tell me what, what's the good and the bad and the ugly of this, Roland.
So, um, I had searched for the slide, I think last night, talking about projections. And I think we have that pulled up, uh, of if, 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 everybody says growth should be 2.5% is really where we want to be, that's the sweet spot for growth. And so if we're optimistic and we think the sweet spot for growth is 2.5%. And then we take out the crazy increases we saw during the COVID issue, because we know that's kind of, it's going to come down eventually. They've done a lot of work on it. But even if we do that, even, even if you assume that, and I'm seeing if we can get to that slide that has a deficit in, but it's, if we didn't do the pay raise and we proceeded with the budget the way I had proposed it originally, looking at the projections for next year, which would be no increase in compensation, right now, based on the, the models and the past trends, thank you for pulling it, we would be looking at a $1.28 million. If we still did nothing to pay in 2026, we would be looking at a $1.9 million deficit. And we, and so you can see as time grows, goes, some of the revenues, the gap closes. But this projection does not include adjustments to compensation for staff. So what, if, if, if council does decide to do that, the deficit, if things turn around and our revenues pick up to 2.5% growth that we, that we're projecting, uh, just as far as a model. Models are only based on your assumptions. Our, our deficit would be, if we did, uh, just the raises, we're looking at a projected deficit of $3 million next year. And so I, I've told you, this year, we, we, we cut about, really about $5 million. But the street funding that we're worried about cutting, the, the pay increases, those, those, those deficits become larger in the future. And, and eventually, and I will tell you, if you pull it from the reserves, don't do the tax rate, next year, my question to council will be, before we talk about budget discussions, is what services do we need to stop doing? What do we need to reduce? And, and so it's not meant to be a, a threat, or I want council informed of the decisions they make and the implications in the coming years of what that means. And so that's what Mr. Pertle asked me before the meeting to be prepared to talk about. So, um, it's, it's really a message that he asked me to give.
So basically, this 1.5 million this year will be 3 million next year?
Yes, sir.
What you're telling us?
Yes, sir.
In the hard numbers?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'd ask you earlier about this $15 an hour. If we gave the 2% raise, or, well, that's what the, coming out of the, the reserve funds would do, what is that $15 an hour guy going to, going to do for a year versus now?
So I prepared, I prepared that PDF and sent it out to council, but I should also have a slide on that. It, 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 it basically, and it reflects, so the maintenance worker is the lowest paid employee on this particular pay scale. So the 2% plus the $1,000, you can see that prioritizes the maintenance worker more than any of the others. So that, that 2% plus the $1,000 really is about roughly $1,700, $1,800 a year.
Well, I guess why I'm taking so much time and everything on this is I, I was the one that pulled in for the raises. That was my baby, and I, I understand that. And I really believe that if these folks don't get something out of this, we're going to be, like I told Ray earlier, we're going to be in the same boat we were in three or four, five years ago. And for me to leave the council like that, I think it would be very, uh, it just wouldn't be right. You know, so that's, that's why I'm willing to take the hit on it. But at the same time, I know some of the other council members need time to, to look at everything, Shannon, and, and I know some of the others where I'm, you know. So this would buy the rest of the council time to do what they think they need to do for next year, the way I'm looking at it. I still don't think it's right coming out of the, the reserves for this, but that's why it's there. And I think this is one time that we might need to use it, and one time only. Uh, I, it shouldn't be a reoccurring expense, so this way, future councils won't have to deal with this. But, uh, this will give everybody time to, to make up their mind and see what they need to study on and how to, to do this for another year. I'm through.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. McGimbo.
Thank you so much. Um, I just want to make, I guess, a couple of points on where I stand on this is, I really would like to see us give some sort of raises to our, um, employees. But at the same time, I don't believe it's the time to raise taxes. Um, I also don't think it's the time to cut essential services. I guess what I'm not understanding is, we've seen examples of government waste, even within our own departments. So I'm not understanding why we can't do a deeper dive and take some time to really comb through every department, see what truly is waste, what is not, see what that amounts to, and then make further decisions from that. I just think when the economy is as volatile as it is, um, the last thing we need to do is raise taxes, um, on our citizens. So I just wish there was a, a different way or another creative way, Mr. McPhee, that we could not eliminate the streets. I, I think we can all agree from the various calls that I've had and talked to my constituents is, the last place people want to see being cut is public safety and streets, um, as well as infrastructure. And so I guess what my question is, is I'm wondering, what steps can we take to look through our departments to make sure that, you know, maybe as simple as reducing the types of things that we purchase, or purchasing things as needed, or, um, I guess I'm not really sure what I'm trying to ask you other than I just don't think it's the time to raise taxes. I would like to see our employees, um, get what they deserve and not fall back on that. But, um, I think as a solution for the first thing to be to threaten to cut off services, I just think that should always be our last resort. I think we should always look at other things before we ever, um, think about cutting essential services from individuals or raising their taxes. I am through for now.
Good. Thank you. Uh, go ahead, Mr. Wade.
Mr. McPhee, over the last five years, to the best of your knowledge and memory, can you tell me if pay increases happened for our employees on a yearly basis?
No, sir, they did not. I will tell you that we accomplished quite a bit of movement in the pay plan the previous two years. I think at the work session, the documentation that was presented by Bonnie Hubbard, the Director of Administration, was that we're still 5% behind on average across the board. So I, I do think we're.
I didn't hear the question. What's the question, Ray?
He, he, he asked me if, over the past five years, we consistently giving, given raises. And I said, no, sir, I don't believe so.
Oh, okay.
I said there was a lot of movement in the last two years, though.
Anything else, Mr. Wade?
No, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, you bet. You bet. Go ahead, Mr. Conley.
At first, I want to say that, um, I've, you guys that were here Tuesday night, I'm impressed by the, we were, we're doing, and I want people that may, that weren't here, that, to know that we are, again, I echo what Ms. McGimbo was saying. We're, we're trying very, we want to do a few things. Number one, uh, like Mr. Pertle said, inflation's tough for everybody, but it's really tough for our, um, city employees that aren't, that are hourly employees, that are, that are, um, our lowest earners. And we want to make sure we take care of them. We also want to take care of our always, uh, number one concern would be our, um, safety of our citizens. And, uh, of course, our firefighters and our police force. So, um, I do think, um, we, we had, uh, on Tuesday's work session, we had four options. And the first option was not the 2%, it was, uh, that $1,500. And I know, I, I do appreciate Mr. McPhee, your team. I can tell you guys are working really hard to come up with solutions for this. And, uh, we've talked about some of those with LeadCo, thinking about how we are creative. I think I, I echo exactly what Ms. McGimbo said. I, I just cannot feel, um, representing our, we talk about inflation, and even though I, I do think, it seems like this is a minimal tax increase, that is a tax increase during a time when times are very tight for everybody. And so I can't support raising taxes. Again, I know we always going to try to do what we can to maintain the integrity of the fund, federal, the, the, the reserve balance that we have. And I agree, I'm, I'm, uh, in agreement with Mr. Pertle here. I don't think that's got to be something that we want to do all the time. But right now, uh, we've got, we, when we, when we, in our discussions on Tuesday night, we looked at a lot of our, you know, recruitment and retention. We've got to make sure our, our, our employees, uh, are happy with where we are. And, um, reevaluating this, maybe again, uh, as we get past this year's budget and knowing, like we said, what, what department's looking close at it? What can we do to really, uh, tighten up in certain areas? But I'm definitely against raising taxes. And, uh, I want to make sure, in two, two ways, though, take care of our, in some way, a raise for our people, um, especially the ones that are, inflation's hurting the most right now. And so, um, I, again, I, I want to say, I just, uh, I, this process has been, uh, is, is not over, but it's been, I, I really appreciate everybody that's, that's taken part in making it, taking it. We're, we're very, um, uh, I feel, um, we're, we're trying to make a way to be very understanding of the times and conservative with taxpayer money, but also take care of our employees that, that we want to keep, uh, recruit and retain, and, and make Longview the best, and, and not lose services, like we said. How can we do that without, especially in essential things that we need, like our safety of our citizens? Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Conley. Go ahead, Mr. Newstead.
So I want to say, like, right now, like, there's a lot of different things that are going on. Just to kind of recap some of the stuff that we had on the work session, stuff like that. You know, sales taxes going down, and so we have that kind of hitting us with other things, too, with legislation we've already hashed out. So those things are causing challenges in the budgeting system. All the taxpayers, everybody across the country, everybody's experiencing inflation and it's tougher times. And increasing taxes, you know, is very difficult. It does increase the challenges with other taxpayers. And definitely aware of that and, uh, considering that. The, um, what I would caution on is using any sort of fund balance savings that we have to pay us the different expense. So there's two different types of expenses. We're talking about road maintenance and wages. So there's what's called reoccurring, and there's called, what's, what's called recurring. So recurring expenses would be the wages, right? That's predictable and regular. You pay the fund balance out of that to pay wages, you're going to find yourself in an annual hole where you're constantly having to dig yourself out. Road maintenance is more re, uh, reoccurring, where it's, it's, it's known, it's periodic, but it's not predictable. So it's a little bit more, you can kind of adjust to that. So if we don't do road maintenance, uh, you can do different things like high grading and do different, more priorities and kind of focus on that. And you could pull from fund balance on road maintenance. You know, there is going to be increased probably, you know, Dwayne could tell us more, but it's probably going to be more expensive to maintain roads next year. So you do have some of those additional costs by doing that. But paying for road maintenance is a little bit more feasible out of a fund balance. Paying a reoccurring expense out of fund balance is not so much. And so, uh, just keep that in mind whenever we do, like, we're not, we're not at that vote right now. We're going to talk about the, uh, property tax rate. But just, I would caution, again, on spending fund balance for, for wages. And that would need to be, come through a sense of, uh, tap property tax, where it is a annual revenue for the city. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. McGimbo.
Thank you so much. I guess just to clarify my thoughts is, I would just like for us to think of other ways, rather than always making the taxpayer the piggy bank, always making that the first choice that we go to is raising their taxes. I really think, you know, even in my small business, even in my personal home, I'm making personal cutbacks right now. I think everybody is. People are making personal cutbacks on their, even their groceries. The amount of times they travel, get gas, do things of that nature. And so I just think we really do need to analyze our departments, see what kind of waste theories in those, and figure out another way that we can get this done without going to make the taxpayer our first bailout. And those are my wrapping thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Pertle.
The problem with what she just said is, we're going to be a year behind. And y'all are going to have to come up with, instead of a million and a half next year, you're going to have to come up with $3 million next year. And nobody wants to increase taxes. Uh, I don't either. But you're, you're bringing me a problem, but you're not bringing me a solution. Now, the solution is, right now, is to get us out of the hole for this year, to keep us up to where next year, you won't have to be doubled up. And I understand, John, all about the, the reoccurring thing. And that's why I said two or three times to Roland, this is a one-time deal. This is not a reoccurring expense. It will be a reoccurring expense on you next year, if you have to do it again, and you decide to come out of it then. But right now, it's trying to, to solve the problem, and nobody's came up with a better solution other than, well, we're going to look into each department. We're going to look over every overhead that we're having. We're going to look into the firemen's, uh, overtime. We're going to do this and do that. That's great, but in the meantime, we're getting behind farther and farther. So do you stop the process and get off and let it, let it try to work itself out? It's not going to work itself out. Uh, it, it just keeps getting worse. So the best solution to me was to get that money in there and get it out of there. And then that gives y'all a year to decide what you need to do. In the meantime, if you don't, it keeps ticking, 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 and you keep getting worse and worse and worse. So your decision next year may not be two cents on the dollar, it may be three or four, if it has to go to a voter deal. I understand that, you know, I mean, we may not have a financial degree up here, but the, the, the slide he put on there about how much the guy was going to make in maintenance made, makes a whole lot more sense to people out there than, than telling me two cents and four cents and everything. I understand that. But a lot of those folks don't. So the old adage in my business, if you're going to come to me with a problem, you better come to me with a solution. And nine times out of 10, we've got a solution, and this is the one time we have to have it. Now, y'all can put it off, and by putting it off, it's just making it worse for everybody else. You know, and if we lose half a dozen policemen or a half a dozen firemen, what have we accomplished? You know? Now, I hate to spend this fund balance, this reserve fund balance on this. I mean, it, it's, it goes against every grain I've got. I mean, I can go to the bank and borrow money for a truck, and I could pay cash for it, but I'm going to borrow money for it, because I'm worth a whole lot more with that money in the bank than I am it sitting in that piece of metal right there that depreciates every day. And that's the kind of the same scenario we're getting, right? that depreciates every day. And that's the, kind of the same scenario we're getting right here, you know. So you've got to stop the bleeding somewhere along the lines, and this is, this is what's happening here. Now, nobody wants to go into this fund balance. It's the holy grail. I hated it when I found out what we were spending some of it on, really, knowing that I was going to have to propose this. But, I mean, that's the way I feel about it financially, being prudent enough to try to save what's going to have to happen next year. And Lord help us, the sales tax goes up, property values go up and everything, but you can't count on that. You don't know. And what you know is here and now, and that's the here and now to me. So that's why I'm proposing to do that. Even though it's against my grain, I'm proposing to do that to stop it, you know, at least temporarily so. You will have time next year to try to do what you think you want to do now and investigate all the departments and all the overheads and all the heads of the departments and everything else. Then y'all can go through, you can go through the salaries and everything else in detail at that point. Right now, we have no time, you know. Two weeks is not going to be enough time to get everybody settled on this, you know. It should have, you know, we didn't know, but until two weeks ago, we were going to have a really bad deficit. So here we are. So that's the problem that was brought to me. That's the solution I came up with, and I thought it would be the easiest for everybody to handle. So I'm through.
Thank you, Mr. Pirtle. I do, I said this the other night, but I think it is worth reiterating, and I know council knows everything I'm about to say, but just to say it publicly, you know, where we started was, Mr. McPhee presented us a balanced budget. After months and months of budget work and cutting about $5 million from requests into a budget that he balanced based on the current tax rate, that is what his job is, to present that to us. Council had great discussions and continues to have great discussions about things that, man, we wish were in there because, gosh, we think the employees are great. We think they deserve a cost of living raise. We'd love to see as much money as we could dig up, go to road maintenance, and we asked him to bring back creative solutions on how to fund it. The possibilities for funding, as we all know from personal life, is increase your income somehow. So that would be a tax rate increase that we're talking about now, or pulling it out of savings. Neither of those options are anything that anyone sitting up here wants to do. I feel like I can communicate that to you clearly. So those are just hard, hard decisions that we're talking about making tonight. And if I understand correctly, I think I hear council saying that they're not interested in raising the tax rate tonight, in which case I'll ask you to, for someone, to make a motion to approve item B for me.
So moved.
Thank you, Michelle. I do think that, as to Mr. Pirtle's point, this is a conversation that we will have in the future. When we get to the budget discussion in just a minute here, we'll talk more about the pay, play, pay, raise options and other things that we've talked about with the budget. And, but this time, I have a motion to approve agenda, nope, consent agenda, item B, as stated, which would maintain the current tax rate. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Conley. All in favor, please indicate with raise of hand. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. That consent agenda item is approved, and that public hearing with current proposed tax rate set. Thank you. Next on the agenda, then, is zoning items. Zoning item A, I don't remember if I need to read this. Mr. Wade, how much of this do I need to read?
Just enough for us to have an idea what you're talking about.
Zoning item, agenda A, Ms. Choi.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, Mr. McPhee. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow for a single-family dwelling in heavy commercial zoning district. A specific use permit is required for a single-family dwelling in heavy commercial zoning district to ensure no negative impact on surrounding properties. Currently, there is a single-family home located on this property, and there is a single-family home located to the east and south of this property. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Are there any questions of Ms. Choi? Public hearing is now open. I have no citizen comment cards. I will close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Moved.
So moved. A second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Conley. All in favor, please indicate with raise of hand. Aye. Any opposed? Zoning item A is approved. Zoning item B, Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The City of Longview is actually requesting to rezone property located here on the northwest corner of MLK Boulevard and Rollin Street, from heavy commercial shown here on the zoning map, to single-family five zoning district. Currently, there are a few houses located on this property. The previous zoning ordinance permitted single-family homes within this zoning district. However, the current UDC does not. Therefore, these properties are considered non-conforming. In order to correct this, the City of Longview is requesting to rezone these properties to bring them into compliance in regards to zoning. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with surrounding uses. Therefore, does not, is not considered spot zoning. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions of Ms. Choi?
I move to approve.
Nope, I'm sorry. Public hearing is now open. No citizen comment cards. Public hearing is closed. I have a motion from Mr. Wade and a second from Mr. Newsted. All in favor, please indicate with raise of hand. Any opposed? Zoning item B is approved. Zoning item C, Ms. Choi.
I think there's a lag with Shannon, just a word.
I know. That's okay. I think she's probably happy. Go ahead.
Thank you. The City of Longview is requesting to rezone this property shown here on the map, bounded by South High Street, on the east, Dunbar Drive, to the west and along South Green Street, from heavy commercial shown here on this map to single-family five zoning district. Currently, there are several homes along, within this neighborhood, and we've had several requests to build homes within this neighborhood as well. Staff does find that the proposed zoning change is consistent with our future land use map and surrounding uses. Therefore, it does not constitute spot zoning. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions of Ms. Choi? Public hearing is now open. I see no comment cards. I will close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
I move to approve.
Second.
I will take the motion from Mr. Wade, second from Ms. Moore. All in favor, please indicate with raise of hand. Any opposed? Zoning item C is approved. Moving on to zoning item D, Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezone this property located here on South Richardson Street, west of Baxter Avenue and north of West Birdsong Street, from planned development, single-family zoning district to single-family four zoning district. Currently, this lot is vacant, but abuts four single-family homes at the northwest corner of Birdsong and Baxter. The applicant would like to develop a single-family home subdivision on this property. The current zoning, which is a planned development, was approved by city council in 1999, and it was approved with this plan shown here, with specific number of lots and a specific layout. In order to deviate from these approved set of plans, the applicant must rezone this property. Staff does find that the proposed zoning change is consistent with surrounding uses. Therefore, it does not constitute spot zoning. Planning and zoning commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Are there any questions of Ms. Choi? Public hearing is now opened. I have no citizen comment cards. I will close the public hearing. Is there a motion? I believe we should allow Ms. Moore the opportunity because it's her district. If you would like to make the motion, we'll wait on your delay.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion from Ms. Moore and a second.
Second.
Second from Ms. Gamboa. All in favor, please say aye or raise your hand. Any opposed? Fantastic. All of our zoning items are approved. Thanks, thank you so much, Ms. Choi. Moving on to action items. Action item A, a public hearing will be held to consider an ordinance amending Unified Development Code to adopt the 2021 International Fire Code with amendments. Mr. Shirley.
Thank you, Mayor Ishihara, members of council, Mr. McPhee. What we are proposing here, as you mentioned, is to amend the Unified Development Code to adopt the 2021 International Fire Code that would be our fire prevention code for the City of Longview. What we've done so far in this adoption process, we have had informal meetings with the builder community. On May 23, we hosted a lunch and learn at ETBA where we presented the code as what we were going to be presenting for adoption, as well as presented significant changes, not all the changes, but those that were significant through our review, as well as the proposed amendments to the code that we were going to be presenting. On July 10, the Construction Advisory and Appeals Board did unanimously recommend adoption of the code to city council, and so for tonight's consideration would be amending the UDC, and then we would ask that that would become effective January 1. Why would we want to update the code? Currently, we're in the 2012 code family, so we're several code cycles behind, primarily driven by ISO ratings, and we are in the process. We have had informal audits, and we'll be going through a formal ISO review next year. One of the significant findings is the outdatedness of our fire codes, and that takes a significant hit in points. It also, the BSAG audit, the building code effectiveness, which reviews our building codes in our building department, we took a significant hint on that because we're more than two code cycles. And so it does place a significant importance on prevention and fire and disaster prevention through effective building codes, as well as, you know, as we talked about, the PPC, which is what we normally call the ISO rating, you know, that's where it really looks at the fire department's ability. But that is, that is the main driver, is staying current with building codes for ISO ratings, as well as, you know, new technologies in building and materials. The older codes don't recognize some of the newer materials and methods of construction. And so we're here to present that. One of the things I do want to present, and I'm not going to go through all the significant changes unless I'll have specific questions, but one of the main changes that I did want to bring to your attention, because I think it's important when we talk about things that we can do to make building in Longview better, more affordable. Housing affordability is a big topic. It's a big topic through comprehensive planning. Everything that we do, we try to figure out, how can the city impact housing affordability? And one of our main areas that we can do that is through our codes, building and safety codes. You hate to limit, you know, go backwards with those, but one of the areas that we're proposing is in the fire code. They're in the appendix D, access requirements for new developments for one and two-family dwellings currently. That's limited to 30 lots. So if you have more than 30 lots, you have to have two points of access. And so over the years, that's become an area of issue, primarily because of the way that we develop is smaller tracks and just, you've got a lot of topography issues. You've got issues with just being able to get a second point of access. And so as we started through that review process, that was an area that we thought about. There's also a recommendation in the National Association of Home Builders as far as recommended exceptions. They actually recommend, I believe it's like 40 or 45, we're actually saying, let's go to 60 because that's the point where, from an engineering standpoint, you need two points of access for traffic flow. So we're saying, let's just be consistent. But that's one of the main significant key amendments that we're recommending, that we wanted you to be aware of, that we think over time will have a significant impact on housing affordability. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Shirley. Go ahead, Ms. Gamboa.
I'm the cab liaison, so I was there during the meeting, but would you go over the things we're omitting from the fire code as well as, I think one thing, I'm sure you mentioned it, but maybe I missed it, that you also were in talks with the fire department to make sure they were okay with these, and they actually recommended some of these changes?
Sure. And as you may remember, enforcement of the fire code falls under the Development Services and not the Fire Marshal's Office. They basically take over after construction and maintain existing properties. But any discussions that we have as far as enforcement, especially with the fire code, we had, the Fire Marshal's Office, the Fire Chief, were definitely involved in those discussions, and we all agreed that this would not create any issues, and that it would be a positive move.
Thank you. Good. Go ahead, Ms. Conley.
Can you, she asked Ms. Gamboa, ask about some omissions of the codes. Can you, you mentioned some were just kind of outdated. Can you give an example of what something would be?
So some of the things that we went through, and I may point to Todd, our Building and Fire Code official on some of the specifics, but as we went through, you know, when they publish a new code, they publish a significant changes. But since we're three code cycles out, we pretty much had to go line item, and so I can't go over each specific. But some of the things, you know, some of the appendix dealing with existing buildings, where once the code is adopted, existing buildings would be required to become compliant with sprinkler systems like high-rise buildings and things of that nature, we are omitting. We take the stance that there's thresholds that require compliance, and that's generally going to be a construction project, either a value or a percentage that should trigger that, not just the adoption of a new code. So that's one of the main areas. There's an appendix in an area dealing with multi-story buildings that would require sprinkler systems. Some of the new chapters in the code, there's just specific chapters now on distilled spirits manufacturing where there weren't specifics in the previous codes. They're now having specific code sections detailing how those are manufactured and stored. I don't know if that answers your question fully.
Yeah, some good examples. Another, the second part I ask, would like to ask is, like you mentioned, lowering the ISO, or I guess the new, what we call PPC, what would, how do you feel what we're doing could be a factor in lowering those?
So it's my understanding, I know when we went through the BSAG process, if you're outside of two code cycles, you get zero points for your building and fire code. And then there's a multiplier, because if, if that doesn't bring you down enough, they put significant impact on your building and fire prevention codes. So, you know, where we're at a two now, if we don't change, you're going to drop several points. It's not just going to be points to where you might stay a two, or you might go to a three. You're going to, you're going to fall off the radar. They put significant emphasis on building and safety codes.
Just my last part is that, but what you're, what you're thinking in your estimation is, actually, the new code is more builder-friendly, more, it's more open to new development.
I'm not going to say it's builder-friendly, because as you get new codes, there's, the codes are reactive. And so anytime you have issues, the codes react to that. If there's new technologies, it reacts to that. The fire code, you know, the things that we deal with on a daily basis as far as whether or not a building has to be sprinkled, what the threshold for that is, that's not really changing. So as far as the impact to our community from the adoption of this new fire code, I think you're going to see minimal impact. With the, with the exception that we're doing, allowing more flexibility, that's going to have a very positive impact. When we come to you in the next few months with the 2021 version of the residential code, the building code, we'll get more into specifics where I think you will have impacts that we'll see, what those look like. Is there a cost, or is it a positive or negative impact? I will tell you, one of the areas that we have seen impacts is with energy codes over the last several cycles. We are not recommending going to the 2021 energy code. We are recommending staying with the 2015, which is a state mandated minimum, because there are significant impacts with energy code on residential and commercial.
Well, that's one, it's included. I appreciate the flexibility, even with the increase from the 60 to 30 and having that one entryway. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Newsted.
I have several on this. Overall, what was the feeling at the meeting? Was it positive?
There, yeah, I think overall, it was positive because of the change that we were recommending, you know. Impact of the fire code on just general construction with our home builders, minimal, because they're dealing with the residential code. The architects and engineers that were there, we haven't, you know, they had questions. We haven't really had any feedback or anybody that came to the cab meeting. It was pretty sparse as far as, and we've put it out to the association, and they've advertised it, and we really haven't had any feedback, really, other than, okay, sounds great. Yeah, we like this. This is a good idea, as far as the amendment that we're proposing.
I appreciate you, you know, partnering with East Texas Builder Association and getting that out. Now, on the, on this specific exception you're making for the 60 units, how's that, it seems less of a fire safety, like, there seems like there's more issue there, but maybe not. Could you elaborate on that?
Yeah, generally, the reason you would limit it would be, you know, especially with one point of access, if you have a fire apparatus set up and you've got- and you've got, you've got people trying to get out, and you've got other fire department trying to come in. Because of the minimum widths of our roads, and that was some of the things that the NAHB recommendations recommended, wider minimum roads and some other things. We already have those as minimums, so that's why that's not part of this. And we felt like because of the way the fire department can respond, what they have, the widths of our roads. One of the changes are in this as well, is we are asking if there's multiple fire hydrants, that maybe they put one on the other side, so that they're staggered because of the way they set up and operate. But we just felt like it wasn't going to pose a significant enough issue as opposed to what we might could gain for housing affordability. Because what we were doing, and through zoning cases, you'll see, you know, with zoning, we created the SF6, the townhouse zoning, to allow smaller lot sizes. We were giving them the ability in zoning, but in the subdivision layout, because they couldn't get a second point of access, they had to build bigger lots, which is not necessarily what the market was wanting. But because of our design criteria, they had to. Land is where a lot of the cost is, and so we were already, their cost upfront was already impacted. So by doing this, hopefully, we can bring that down.
Yeah, and you answered it, is the width. I was wondering how that would be.
Yeah, and that was one of the UDC changes. You know, we used to have different widths, depending on if it was public, private, this and that. Now we have a standardized street cross-section, whether it's public, private. And so that helps us be more flexible and consistent.
And then in regards to the ISO rating, as far as the building code and fire code goes, does this, would this put us more towards the one ISO rating? Or are we still just staying where we are? Are we just staying in that two zone for this move?
I don't think I'm qualified to answer. I think what it would do is it would allow us to maintain the points in that section that we've had. So I don't know that that's going to be the piece that gets us over to a one. I don't think so.
Yeah, I just mean like, for an ISO rating one, will this be kind of the standard for there, where you need to be at, or we still have some work to do?
Oh, yeah. I think if we don't upgrade our fire codes and stay current, you're, there's no chance to be a one. And there's, I don't think there's a chance to even stay at a two. I think you fall, for sure.
All right. And then last is, how is this going to be communicated with the builders? And so that they're not aware of these? Because anytime we do these changes to the UDC, there's always, you know, a learning curve on that. So how, what are we going to do to address?
So if adopted tonight, then we'll start pushing that out. And I know ETBA puts all of it out in their newsletter. We do have a website, our, on City of Longview with the building code, we have links to the, all the codes as well, so people can get free access to those current codes.
All right. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just know that people had a lot of those same questions. So could we just bring up Chief Steelman, just so he can answer some of those questions? I know that during CAB, the only, you asked what the consensus was. I think people were mainly okay with it. The only question was truly, how does this affect fire codes? And how the fire department sees this working out with the ISO ratings and such? So if Chief Steelman would just go into detail.
Sure. So we were involved in this entire process, and we're totally fine with the omissions that have been made. Some of the things that were in the appendices of that don't really apply to the way that things are done here in Longview. I'll give you one example, is building air supply systems. That's one of the new things in the fire code, where they require you to put an air supply system for specific use by the fire department, much like a sprinkler system or a standpipe system, to help firefighters manage their air supply while fighting fire in multi-story buildings. Our tallest building in town is 10 stories high. We have air cylinders, we have strong firefighters. We can hump extra air cylinders up those floors to get it up there. Now, if we had buildings that were 30, 40, 50 stories, that's a different game. That's a whole different landscape, and that's something you'd probably definitely want to consider. I know there's several communities in the metroplex that are updating their codes specifically to get that functionality in their multi-story buildings, to help them when they have to fight those fires. Now, for the point thing, right now, our ISO prediction is that we're going to come in at 87.87. The goal, if you're looking at trying to build one, you've got to cross over the 90 percentile. So 87.87, if the fire code is adopted and brought up to date, that's worth 1.21 points off of that 87.87. So if we don't adopt this, we fall completely out of compliance with the fire code portion of the ISO, and we lose 1.21 points. So that 87.87 is contingent on council adopting this to get us those 1.21 points. If that kind of puts it into perspective of how the points actually fall out.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
So we either fall, we're not moving forward, we're just, would fall.
We're not going to cross the 90, but we're not, just because of this one item, we're not going to drop below a two.
Is it going to move us forward any, or is it going to stay kind of?
No, it's, if we don't adopt it, we're going to drop from whatever 1.21 is off of 87.87. So we're going the wrong way in the scale.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Mr. Ray, are we actually adopting this tonight, or I just need to have a public hearing on it?
Public hearing and adoption.
And adoption? Okay. Well, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. I have no citizen comment cards for that, so I will close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
A motion and a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Newsted. All in favor, please say aye, or raise your hand, sorry. Any opposed? That is approved. Thank you so much. Action item B, consider a resolution awarding a contract to execute unnecessary documents with True Roads LLC. Mr. Archer.
Yes, Mayor, Council. Tonight, I bring forward a resolution for your consideration to award a contract to True Roads in the amount of $6,508,706. If you'll remember, this was one of those projects that was approved as part of the 2018 voter-approved bond election. We had set aside 5.2, that was what was approved on that bond. We applied, and we received a grant from Tech dot in the amount of 2.8. And like we talked about earlier, we were able to use those 5.2 million-dollar funds so that we'd have matching funds to get that grant. The project extends from Pacific Avenue to Estes. We opened the bids on May 30th. We had three bidders. True Roads was low bid at the 6.5. This will give us 2.3 miles of new asphalt, adds bike lanes, and adds sidewalks, and it becomes our real first complete street here in Longview. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
That's great. Any questions for Mr. Archer?
I just have kind of a reoccurring question, and I'll pose this question to Mr. McPhee as well. So we opened the bids on May 30, 2024, for this project. How did we advertise this bid, Mr. McPhee?
It's our standard practice to advertise 30 days in advance of the bid opening. This, using some Tech dot funding, they may have had some additional language we had to put in the advertisement for bids. We do that, I know we do that in the Longview News Journal. We also do that in various trade and construction. Those people and members of construction communities are members of construction bid boards. I think there's one called CivCast that we post to. And so it's, it's sort of a national standard, but we're required to do a publication locally. And that's why we do that with the News Journal. And then we advertise, and sometimes we'll have a pre-bid, sometimes we'll not. This one probably did because of all of the restrictions that come with the grant money from the state, which is passed through from the feds. And so this was one of those creative ways that we bid the bond, the bond project, we had 5.2 million. If we had bid it in 2018, it would have been 5.2 million. Construction costs came through the roof during those years. We had no cost contingencies in the bond election. There was, it was straight the dollars of what was happening there, because I asked if we could put some in, and they said no. And so this was one of the ways that we've combated the rise in inflation to still do the projects that the voters approved as part of the project.
Great. And second part, in deciding which company would win this bid, what was the process in deciding on what the low bid was?
So it is actually, we are required to take the low bid. So the low bid was one number, and then to get it within budget, they did some value engineering through the state and the contractor to meet that. So we're required by, and Robert Ray has told me this a number of times, we must take the low bid, and the low bid is whatever you compare, what everybody puts at the end of the day on that line item.
Great. Thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
Good. Go ahead, Ms. Conley.
I just have a quick question. So we, the bids, 6.5, okay? And we, you said we got 2.2, 5.2 from the 2018 bond? Is that correct?
Yes. Back up here. We had 5.2 from the bond, and then the grant was 2.
The grant's 2.8.
Yeah.
So.
And then you have the design cost and right-of-way cost. There's other costs associated with it. But that's, this is the actual construction cost that you're awarding tonight.
So the design money, like the excess would, is one, like 1.5 million would be for the extra design parts?
Yeah, design right-of-way, you know, those kind of things.
And Tech dot charges for the administration of the grant, because they, the feds give them the money, but they have to recoup their staff time because they have to check all the paperwork document. We've complied with their restrictions, and so that's where the rest of that money went. It has all went to this project. Some of them are what I would consider soft costs.
Okay, so the soft costs, again, we've had a discussion about type money. If it, if some of the design costs could be less than 1.5, we need the grant money?
The design was actually, the design was like 613,000. Right-of-way was 160,000, and then Tech dot, it was about 712,000.
Okay.
Then went back to Tech dot. And so that gets us, that gets us right there to the $8 million total cost of that project.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Newsted.
And so in Councilman Wade's fashion, I'm going to, this is in jest, but I've noticed the power lines in here, so I guess we can't bury those, right?
Right. They'll stay where they're at.
Thank you.
I would like to, I don't know, does it need to be closed before we move on this?
Uh, go ahead. No, yeah, if you're ready to move, go.
I'd like to make a motion to approve this project.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please indicate with a raised hand. Any opposed? That is approved. Thank you so much. Next is budget items. Just as a reminder, this is our third time to talk about budget, I think. And so this is a discussion, not an action item. Tonight's discussion will be followed at our next meeting, which is August 22nd, with an intended proposed agenda item of adoption of that budget. But tonight is just discussion. Mr. McPhee, I know that council is intimately aware of how you prepare the budget and do those things, but sometimes we ask you to talk about stuff just for education of our citizens. Would you just talk a little bit about how you prepare the budget before it is actually presented to council?
So it's a, it's, it's an excruciating process, to be honest with you. The directors and the managers begin their planning and forecasting for their costs for the coming year. And so they start in January. So if you can imagine starting in January to try and project your costs from October to the following September, just to be honest with you, they're really good at it. They've done this long enough. There's a, there's a long line of experience that does this. They start that work in January. We come in in March and have kind of taken into account where we're at halfway through the year, and if there are adjustments we need to make halfway through the year, if there are things we need to tweak. Obviously, we look at where we're at, and then we sort of, we sort of do a little bit of an indication of what the predictors, based on our experience, and Angela Cohen does a great job providing those financial reports that kind of send us the signal of what's happening in the economy. And I assure you, I read articles in newspapers and tons of economists, but they all have different opinions. So we try and read between the lines of what the forecasts are. We tell, we try and relay that message to the administrative team, which are the managers and the directors that do the hard work of preparing these budgets. They go back, they have about, I think this, this year, they had a whole two weeks to put all of that together. Payroll costs, insurance costs, gas forecasting costs, fleet numbers, fleet replacement schedules, all of that, they package up, and they prepare that and enter that into the budget review system. That's usually done, I think this year it was done at the end of, at the end of March, I mean, May, excuse me. At the end of May, there's a lot of packaging of some of the stuff that you see here, but I'll tell you, the binders that you have are about a fifth of the binders that are prepared for the review. There's a series of meetings over two weeks that we spend meeting with every department head and every administrative manager within the city. We review line by line the budget from last year and compare it with their budget requests this year. Anything that, in a general category that exceeds 2%, they've got to provide explanation in advance of our meeting. So we meet with approximately 60 people in the ante room for two weeks straight. And it's, it's not uncommon for us to call them back in, different questions, further clarifications, and we look through those budget materials and based on the conversations we had had, try and narrow the gap in the budgeting process. And so that, that process takes place from, at the end of, the middle of June, after we've had those meetings, the next five weeks, there is a ton of work, not only by the directors and managers in support of us, but as the budget team, and I've talked about that, that's me, Ms. Hagenbueker, Ms. Cohen, and Ms. Walker. There's, there's a constant review and draft of what we've done, where we're at, reviews, tweaks. Some numbers get updated, all in preparation for the budget presentation that we prepare for you and submitted, and I presented in July 18.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. And I know, at least speaking for me, you were the first city manager that has asked for my input early on in the process. If I had anything that I wanted to see included, and I appreciate the efforts to try and do that. I know this year was hard, but that's, those are the discussions we're having tonight. So thank you, Mr. McPhee. Is there anything else that you had planned for presentation? I didn't know if that was the case.
He forgot to mention, he does meet with us as well to get our priorities.
That's right. You do meet with council. That's exactly, exactly what I intended to point out.
I meet with the city council in March, and so that's why some of the new folks that have joined us didn't get that opportunity. I think we followed up with y'all afterwards and explained that. And Mary Ann had actually thought that was a suggestion. It was a completely novel idea, because it had not been done before, so.
Appreciate that. Do you have any presentation, or is this pure discussion?
I think y'all are retired to hearing.
Pure discussion. All right. I'm opening up the floor for any comments, questions, discussion.
I just want to commend Mr. McPhee and Mary Ann about the orientation process. I know Ms. Moore would probably feel the same way. You know, learning and educating, I think it's impressive, the amount of time that all the directors spend with us, and get to know them, and get to know what they do. And a part of that was the budget. So thank you guys for that preparation.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's it.
I'd also just like to thank our city staff for their hard work. I don't really have anything further. I think we discussed this for five hours on Tuesday.
We did, indeed. I would, I will go ahead and make a comment, just in discussion about the budget, that I am really grateful for the investment of all the council members. This has been a great opportunity for input, for discussion, for learning. And like I mentioned earlier, we just have some hard choices. So I'd like to commend you for bringing to us a balanced budget that had some cuts that we aren't a fan of, but that's the hard position that everybody is in. So it is, it is my position, and will be my vote, that while I very much would love for City of Longview employees who deserve it to receive a raise, that if we cannot do it in the budget, that I don't support pulling it out of the fund balance. We've considered, you know, starting this week, it's been a fast, you know, quick week. But if, and we've already voted, we're not going to update the tax rate. So it is my opinion that we accept the budget as presented by Raul, and that will be my personal opinion and recommendation to council. I think, as Mr. Pirtle pointed out earlier, we've heard about lots of things that will continue to just increase our annual operating expenses. There are public safety needs, entering that ambulance into service, increased staffing issues. It's created overtime issues, that's created personnel issues there. We are behind on our pace schedule where we'd like to be. I know that each of us are committed to supporting employees, and I'm only one vote up here. So, you know, that doesn't mean you have to take my recommendation, but that's mine. I think if we are not going to look at raising the tax rate, that it has not been the time to pull that out of fund balance. And I believe we'll all, with the exception of Mr. Pirtle, be up here talking about this again next year and all those hard things. So that's my comment as far as the discussion goes. And yeah, I'd love to hear from other people, or any other discussions or questions. people or any other discussions or questions. If we have none, I would be glad to move on to fee resolution. Everybody good? All right. Moving on to budget discussion B, proposed 2425 fee resolution. That's you again, Mr. McPhee.
So we provided this initially. We've talked about a lot of different things, haven't provided the fees. The one, the fees that we highlighted were obviously related to the utility, which I think are the most significant increases, and I think we had good review on that. And thank you, council and mayor, for your comments regarding that. The sta, the directors that are here that have recommended these fees are willing to come up and answer any questions now, also willing to answer any questions beyond tonight. If you've not gotten through the several pages that there are of them, just draw some general informational, there's, there was some intentionality to try and increase returns on some of the fees that we have because they hadn't been updated in many years. So we bumped some a little bit overall to try and tweak that revenue up 3% here and there in smaller fees, but overall, it does, it's not an across-the-board 3%. We look at what we've gotten, how many we've had. There were some tweaks on that in some of the development services. There've been some fee changes on the ones that are coming to mind in particular, were some adjustments to the ones at Maud Cobb Activity Center, the convention complex. Just, just some of those things to make us more in line. Fees have been looked at by every director, and some saw the need to make adjustments up. Some made adjustments in different ways, just based on the demand and the impact to everyone. So I think they're all very minimal, but I think it's, if you do a little bit at a time as you go, it's like anything else, you don't have as far to make up when it's time.
Sure. Any questions or comments or discussion? Yeah. Everybody quiet now? All right. Okay. Then I will close that discussion, and we'll move on to items of community interest. Mr. Collin, that starts with you.
Well, it's an exciting time in Longview, Texas, because I know, I'm excited to see little people come back to the school building.
We're excited to send them.
Parents are probably excited too. But we have, we've, we got started, teachers and staff came back on Tuesday. It's a great day on, and I know Longview is doing the same Spring Hill and Hallsville, and we're just, tomorrow night, I just, tonight, I actually had a couple meet the teacher and I said, I'm here with you guys instead of being there. We had a couple more on Monday, but tomorrow night's a big night for all of our high school. I just wanted to share that. If you want to be, anybody that wants to support the Pirates, including you, Mr. Wade, you can be there. We'd love to have you. But we would, you know, everybody just gets recognized, the football, the band, it's a good time to start the year and get a little spirit. They'll be in the Pirate Center at the gym on Fairmont Street, so tomorrow night at 6:30. And just excited about school starting back and ready to make a difference in the lives of these kids.
Thank you for doing what you do. Ms. Moore, you are up next.
I don't have anything, just wishing all the school kids a happy school year and ready for them to go back to school.
Thank you for making the effort to join us virtually and for going to the conference. I think that's awesome. Mr. Wade?
I don't have any photos of it, so my apologies for that, but last weekend, we had a really good back-to-school event at Broughton Recreation Center, and I'd like to thank the city staff, Mr. Albertson, for accommodating us. He went out of his way to make the facilities available, and we appreciate that. We had a lot of community members that came out. Hopefully, I'll have pictures the next time, but I publicly would like to thank all of them for getting involved and to wish all of our teachers and school administrators a happy new school year. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you.
I'd just like to commend Mr. Wade for his promotion at that event and, you know, always doing what he can to help that side, his community and making sure that those kids are taken care of. I appreciate that, Mr. Wade.
Thank you, sir.
Yep, we appreciate it very much. Mr. Newsstad?
Yes, I need to blame the mayor and Mrs. Hubbard for bringing the adoptable pet to council a few meetings ago. And so we went there and we ended up adopting Lucy, so super excited about that, and she's a wonderful dog, so I appreciate that. And I want to say the staff there, I went there for another dog, and that dog was already adopted. And then I saw another dog, I was like, let me check out that dog. And so I went and checked out that dog, and the staff there, the, I was talking to the dog, talking to her and kind of explaining, you know, kind of what I was looking for because I wasn't, you know, feeling with that dog. And she's like, I have the perfect dog for you. And she brought Lucy in, and Lucy came in, put her head right on my lap, I was done. So the, the staff there is amazing, so thank you, Longview Animal Care and Adoption Center for all that you do. Appreciate it. And then for the Little Shop of Horrors, Theater Longview Presents, this is your last weekend, so Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Seating is limited, so definitely get your tickets in there. Our public information officer, Richard Yeekly, is the lead there, Seymour, and man, the whole staff, everybody, the production level, the skill is just amazing. I said this on a, in a post, but I'm not a Little Shop of Horrors fan, like it just never was my, my, my jam, and I loved it, man. I think it was, it was great. So definitely go check it out, even if you're not a fan of Little Shop of Horrors. So this, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Ms. Kimball?
Unless we change the city ordinance, I can only get one more dog, so currently a five, fun fact. Well, happy back-to-school Panthers, Pirates, Lobos. I love all the school districts, you know, Wildcats, especially August 19th. We're grateful that Spring Hill has invited our mayor, and she will be giving a proclamation, and we, I will be reading a letter just thanking Spring Hill for their hard work in academics and sports, and we'll be giving a shout-out to the baseball team. So if you can make it out, August 19th, to Spring Hill's back-to-school pep rally. I will like to blame Mr. Noon because he never got me the graphics, so, Mr. Noon, if you're watching this, it's your fault, it's not up there. I'm just kidding. And shout-out to Public Works, woo! Thank you, Public Works, for fixing drainage issues along, in Spring Hill particularly, along Cheryl. I know they've been there for a while, so thank you for investigating it, thoroughly looking into it for months, and coming up with solutions. And thank you, Mr. McPhee, for helping stay on top of it. We appreciate you.
Touch a truck, feed a family. The Longview Community Ministries has been in our community for a very long time. They help with rental help, utility help, dental help, as well as meeting food insecurity needs. We are looking for vehicles, so fire, police, this is where I need you to bring me some fire trucks and police vehicles, which you always do, and we're very grateful, so thank you for that partnership. Vendors, food trucks, in activities. If you want to advertise your business for free, now is your time to do it with a child's activity. And the way to get into this amazing event is bring in a canned good to help meet food insecurity needs in our community. So again, mark your calendar for October 12th, and please bring canned goods to help feed the families in our community. And if you have any of those vehicles, food trucks, or an activity, please reach out to events@lcmserves.org.
Thank you.